Everybody please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to this republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Board Secretary, has this meeting been advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act?
Yes, it has, Mr. Mackinone.
Let's have a roll call, please.
Mr. Bauter.
Here.
Mrs. Mackinone.
Here.
Mr. Bishada.
Here.
Mr. Brozinski.
Here.
Mr. Sayak.
Here.
Mrs. Tapinto.
Here.
Mrs. Rucuya.
Here.
Mrs. Trapp.
Yeah.
And Mr. Mackinone.
Present. Dr. Alphano, we have some presentations this evening.
Yes, Ms. Mar, would you come up for your orangutan presentation? I didn't know they made pictures. I just read that today. Part of the highlights. Probably better than me. Come on up, guys.
You got room there, Ms. Mar? Are you gonna put the screen? You need the screen? I'll put up.
Good evening. I'm Ms. Mar. I'm the principal at Samstow Upper Elementary School. President Mackinone, Vice President Sayak, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Alphano, Ms. Eichner, and Central Office Administrators. I'd like to thank you because several months ago you approved a trip for our students to go to the Philadelphia Zoo to start a project. And when you give teachers who have a vision that opportunity, diligent students, and enthusiastic, very enthusiastic students, have a supportive community, the school community, and the community at large, great things happen. And over spring break, I was informed that our students placed in the top ten, we were the top ten class, to have the opportunity to win these prizes. And then, when we returned from spring break, we went to the Philadelphia Zoo again. And these students before you, along with Ms. Us, Ms. Lawrence, Ms. Connors, Mrs. McLeod, and Mrs. Canali, they won the grand prize at the Philadelphia Zoo and were awarded $2,500 that we're gonna use in the school for some good things. So we are very proud of what they did and what they accomplished. And tonight, they're going to speak to you a little bit about what they did for Samstow Saves the Orangutans.
Good evening. Good evening. We would like to welcome everyone to the Board of Education meeting tonight. We would also like to thank the Board of Education and Administration for allowing us to share our presentation. We worked really hard on this project from December through February. We hope you enjoy what we have to say.
Did you know that orangutans are endangered species? Orangutans only live in countries of Borneo and Sumatra. An orangutan habitat is found in rainforests of these two countries. Companies are using palm oil and destroying orangutan habitat to make new palm oil plantations. Palm oil is found in almost everything we eat and use daily. Without our help, orangutans could be extinct in next 10 to 15 years.
The Philadelphia Zoo reached out to schools across the Northeast to help fight for this cause. They sponsored a contest called the UNLESS Contest based off the book, The Lorax, by Dr. Seuss. The idea behind the contest comes from the quote, "Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing's going to get better." It's not. Over 3,000 students from 83 different schools signed on to help the zoo with their campaign. The campaign can be followed on the Philadelphia Zoo's website and goes along with their Year of the Orangutan Celebration.
Using iPads, we began our campaign by first researching companies that were members of the Roundtable of Sustainable Palm Oil. These companies have made a great effort to help orangutans and only use palm oil that does not come from plantations that destroy orangutan habits. After we researched, we used lists to help labels from these companies. These labels were then used to create orangutan collage cutouts.
With these labels and products, we also photographed ourselves holding the product. And then, with the help of Mrs. Pakensky, our technology teacher, we photoshopped ourselves into the rainforest with the message,[334.42][334.82]"I'm orangutan friendly" underneath. We also had our school sign change to show we are an orangutan-friendly school. And we had information put on Sereval's public access channel.
We wanted to have everyone in our school to help with our campaign. We were so thankful that orangutan-friendly... We were so thankful that 18 classes joined our cause. That is about 500 students from the SUES. Each class put our orangutan-friendly classroom seal outside their door. We, hell, they changed for change, drive in our cafeteria and raised $396 to adopt three orangutans from the Orangutan Outreach Federation. And with additional money, we were able to buy eight pieces of artwork created by orangutans from the Shanae Mountain Zoo for our school. In addition, we also got help from the SUES Green Team in spreading awareness through our morning announcements. We were also able to create an orangutan paper mache mask in our art classes with the help of Mr. Rice.
We tried to spread the message to as many people as possible in the community as well. We were able to have ShopRite join our cause, and we decorated over 500 grocery bags with messages about sustainable palm oil and the need to help the orangutans. We attached messages to Girl Scout cookies that went out on orders in our school. We wrote letters to companies asking them to join the RSPO. We were so excited at the number of responses we got back from companies.
After we submitted our project at the end of February, we had to wait a very long two weeks to hear any news. We were told that we were a top-ten finalist and our project would be judged by the Green Panel of Judges from the Philadelphia Zoo. During spring break, it was announced that the Samstow Upper Elementary School was one of the top four classes for the K-5 part of the contest. At a press announcement on April 16th, Ms. Mar, Ms. Us, Ms. Lawrence, and some other students from our class went to the zoo to hear what we had won. The Samstow Upper Elementary School's Team 5-3 was the grand prize winner for the K-5 contest. We won $2,500 and we were given adoption papers for an orangutan at the Philadelphia Zoo.
My classmates are holding pictures of the different projects we completed for the contest. On the PowerPoint, you can see other parts of our project as well. From this project, we learned that you can do more if you work together instead of just working by yourself. The orangutans are not the only ones who benefited from this contest. We really see that something we do can really make a difference in the world. For more information, please go to the SUES website and follow the links for our cause. We want to thank Mrs. Brady, Mrs. Mar, and the SUES community for their help and support with this project.
If you wanna take pictures, you can come up and take pictures. You don't have to sit back. So, they did a fabulous job. As you could see, we won $2,500. Thank you for the teachers, and Ms. Mar, and Ms. Brady. Especially, what, the students did a fantastic job. And we really appreciate it, guys. This wasn't an easy undertaking, and certainly, we're all proud of you. So, again, thank you very much, and congratulations. And I'm sure you'll continue this process starting next year as well. Okay? Good luck, and have a fantastic summer. Good luck, guys. Okay, thank you very much, guys. Awesome job. Thank you very much. Ms. Sutherland, would you please come to the podium? We're now gonna do the top-ten students for Sereval. Mr. Mackinone? This is also another treat tonight. Top-ten students of the high school. And I know Ms. Sutherland would like to introduce these youngsters. And we also have certificates for them.
Good evening. It gives me great pride to introduce the top-ten students for the class of 2012. I'll start from the bottom and go up. Number 10, Menor Ansari. Please come up and stay up here. Number 9, Josh Kamal Gill. Number 8, Amudya Upala. Number 7, Brian Lands. Lands up. Number 6, Hansa Joshi. Number 5, Kia Ton. Number 4, Hedi Chang. Number 3, Shivali Patel. Our salutatorian, Kenjo Patel. And our valedictorian, Pavan Shah. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, I want to congratulate you all. Currently, right now, believe there's 408 students in the high school. And here you have the top-10. Raise your hand if your kid is up here. Parents, they're up here. I always think it's cool to be smart, and you made your parents very proud tonight. And the parents, I want to congratulate you too. Because you know, as parents, we're not judged by our accomplishments, but by the accomplishments of our children. So, yeah, congratulations.
Parents, if you'd like to come up and take pictures, you may. I also would like to echo what Mr. Mackinone said. This is a tremendous accomplishment to be the top-10, especially the valedictorian and the salutatorian. And we wish us nothing but the best. Very successful group. And I want to thank all the teachers at the high school and the administration because without them, these youngsters would probably say they wouldn't be standing up here. So, congratulations to the parents, to the students. You guys done an excellent job. I'm sure this is just the beginning of a very bright future. God bless. Okay, we have one more presentation, which is an awesome one. I'm gonna ask Ms. Duffy in the transition program. The students that are involved can also come up, as well as the teachers. Ms. Duffy, you have the floor.
On May 18th, some of our transition students from the We Care project were honored at a luncheon in Princeton for receiving the New Jersey School Boards Association Innovations in Special Education Award. Only 10 schools in the state received this award. And so, we're very proud of the accomplishments of our We Care students. We Care, which stands for Charitable Acts, Real Life Experience, provides transition students with authentic learning and skills such as planning fundraising projects for issues they care about, researching the project, setting a budget, enlisting the support and collaboration of the entire student body, and then seeing the project through. These students have raised money to support funds to combat childhood cancer through creating an Alex's Lemonade Stand. They've raised funds to support programs available through Autism Speaks by creating pins made from puzzle pieces and selling them at the high school. And they've raised money to provide holiday gifts for needy preschool students by raffling gift baskets that they created. These students have taken a leadership role in engaging the support of the entire student body in issues and causes they care about. Their energy and enthusiasm for their projects is contagious and impacts the entire student body. They should be proud of the inclusive environment that they have helped to create at the high school, where everyone's contributions are valued and everyone learns to work together. The students have prepared an ato moto to show you, which details the kind of work they've done.
We would like to thank all the high school teachers and students who have been so important to the success of the We Care project, as well as Mr. Curry, Mr. Gluski, Ms. Sutherland, and Mr. Brown, who have been so supportive of all our efforts. I'd now like to recognize the students representing the We Care program, our captains, if you will. Cassidy Marsinzic. Allison Sinarski. Right in front of the screen. Thank you. And Janet Winneboah. I would also like to call up their teachers. Ms. Colleen Comaford, Ms. Donna Amato, our Transitions Coordinator and We Care Specialist, Mr. Sheila Vermin, Jackie Castronovo, our Supervisor of Special Services, and our Program Power Professional, Moritza Morales. Yes, come on up. Do you wanna give the plaque to Dr. Alphano? Do you want to just show this? Do you want to present this to the district? Okay, this is the plaque that was awarded to the students for the competition. And it says, "Presented to We Care, Sereval Public Schools for Creative Successful Programming for Students" by the New Jersey School Boards Association, where our mission is the advancement of public education. So, this is to hang somewhere in a prominent location within the district.
On my wall of fame?
On your wall of fame, of course. That would be very appropriate. So, congratulations to everyone in the We Care project. You got it. You got it.
I want to thank Mrs. Duffy especially, and all the teachers, as well as the students. Let's give them a big round of applause. We have one more presentation, which is not on the... Or one more announcement that's not on the agenda for tonight. I would like to ask Mr. Brown to come up. And I want to congratulate the OM team, as well as all our teams. State champions, and they also competed in the national competition. So, Mr. Brown, come on up. And I did get a postcard. Just want you to know. Thank you for the postcard.
On behalf of Ms. McCabe, the High School Odyssey of Mind coach, and I, I just wanted to thank the Board of Education, and Dr. Alphano, and Ms. Eichner, and our building administrators, Mr. Kubik and Ms. Sutherland, for supporting the Odyssey of the Mind program and making it possible. We just returned from a wonderful trip to Iowa, where the students competed at the international level because they were placed second and first in the states, respectively, middle school and high school. The trip itself, obviously, was very wonderful and a lot of fun, but it was also very rewarding. Our middle school team just received a certificate of appreciation in the mail the other day from a team from Mount Laurel, New Jersey, whose coach broke her ankle during the tournament. And our students, being the wonderful Sereval students that they are, stepped up and took them under their wing. They spent their valuable time practicing with them, going over paperwork with them, just assuring them that everything was fine. And their deeds did not go unnoticed, as evidenced by this wonderful certificate. That really was an unexpected bonus. Would you mind if some of the students gave some brief words, Brendan? And thank you again.
Good afternoon. Good evening. My name is Brendan. I'm from the middle school Odyssey of the Mind team. Mary Lou Cook once said, "Creativity is inventing, experimenting, growing, taking risks, breaking rules..." Thank you. "...making mistakes and having fun." Creativity, hard work, long hours, friendship, and wonderful coaches, and our fantastic Board of Education equals Odyssey of the Mind. Odyssey of the Mind is a fantastic program that I am proud to be a part of. In May, one team from the high school and the middle school had the opportunity to travel to Iowa for the Odyssey of the Mind World Finals. The trip was amazing. From performing pin trading, a creativity fair, and spontaneous, to plane and bus rides and sleeping in a fancy hotel, this trip was one to remember and taught us that hard work pays off. Without you, the Board of Education, our trip would not have been possible. I would like to take this time to thank you for everything that you have supplied us with, especially your support. Traveling to World Finals to represent Sereval meant so much to us. And it means so much knowing that we have a terrific Board of Education supporting us. Thank you.
On behalf of the high school, I'm Arianna. This is Hamza Ansad. And I don't know if we can beat that wonderful speech by Brendan. But we would like to thank the Board of Ed for funding our trip to Iowa. Again, it was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We were thrilled to have won first place at our state competition. And it was a mind-blowing experience. Meeting people from all over the country and all over the world was phenomenal. And we were just... Just being there was just thrilling. You know, we didn't really place that high, but we did the best that we could. And just doing all these activities with our team was just really a memory to treasure.
I would just like to thank the Board of Education for allowing us to attend the World Finals. And I'd like to thank my coach and advisor, Ms. McCabe, for dedicating her time and being there for us.
They basically summed it all up.
Very proud of all our students. Let's give them all a big hand. This is what we're here for. Okay, now for my report. I know you're all waiting for that. Okay, now for my report. I know you're all waiting for that.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, pressing on with the, uh, the agenda. Everybody should have received, posted on the portal, the monthly technology and maintenance reports. Anybody have any questions, comments? If not, everybody also should have seen copies of the regular and executive session meeting minutes from May fifteenth and a special session of May twenty-ninth. Mrs. Backo.
Yes.
Any questions?
Um, I don't have a question on the minutes. I just, um, actually have a concern. I, I don't think that the executive session minutes from May fifteenth were, um, complete. Um, I, I think we had discussed things when you weren't in the room. I, I think they need to be added.
I'd be more than happy if the board member wishes to forward to me what was discussed. Since I was not present, I could not add them.
Should we table that?
Yeah, go ahead. If you want to table those minutes, I'll just take a motion to table them.
Well, just the, at least the executive.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to table the executive session minutes of May fifteenth.
And only, and we'll clarify, it would be the second one.
The second exec, the second what?
The executive.
Two executives.
Of May fifteenth.
Yes, the second, the second executive session.
There's a motion to table, need a second?
Second.
Does vote?
Move my Mr. Syak second by. I apologize.
Mrs. Ducko.
Executive Sessions, five fifteen twelve, number two. Mr. Bauta?
Yes.
Mrs. Backo?
Yes.
Mr. Bishada?
Yes.
Mr. Rosinski?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes.
Mr. DePessa?
Yes.
Mrs. Lakuya?
Yes.
Mrs. Prab?
Yes.
And Mr. Mackinon?
Yes.
Um, I ask which board member will I receive those, uh, revisions from? So I know who to follow up with.
I'll do it. Those are mine. I can do it. It's okay. I'll do it.
Just so I know who's going to be sent, that's all.
Okay, Student Council Representative, Tony, what's going on?
Hi, uh, I'd like to start with Activities Fair up at the middle school. A couple of weeks ago, we had Activities Fair at the middle school. It was a fun time for both the high schoolers and the middle school students. Uh, the middle school students got a chance to see, uh, all the clubs and activities and sports that they'll have offered to them at the high school. Uh, speaking of fun, the annual Student Council Conference was a success and everybody enjoyed themselves at Six Flags. And currently, we are preparing and organizing the UBU presentation in anticipation of the incoming freshman class. That's all.
Thank you. Dr. Alphano, your report, please.
Um, highlights.
District highlights. How could I forget? Mr. Syak?
He's eagerly awaiting.
Uh, Team Five Three at the Samson Upper Elementary School participated in the Unless Contest sponsored by the Philadelphia Zoo. The students were challenged to create an awareness campaign about endangered orangutans. Through their hard work and dedication to the cause, the students were able to spread the word in newspapers, on a website, in the community, and to each person in our school. Students sponsored a change-for-change drive and raised, uh, three hundred and ninety-six dollars. The money was used to adopt three orangutans from the Orangutan Outreach Foundation, as well as to purchase eight pieces of artwork painted by orangutans from the Cheyenne Mountain Zoo. The orangutan artwork and adoption certificates are on display outside the main office of the Samson Upper Elementary School. Students also researched companies that are members of the Roundtable on Sustainable Palm Oil. Through their research, they collected labels from products that do not use palm oil, which destroys the rainforest homes of the orangutans. The students worked from December through February on projects relating to the cause and enlisted the help of eighteen classes in our school. After judging the three thousand students from eighty-three different schools, Team Five Three was the grand prize winner of the contest and the students were presented with a check for two thousand five hundred dollars. Congratulations to the district's OM teams who competed in the OM two thousand and twelve World Finals at Iowa State University. The high school's Division Three Weird Science team placed fourteenth out of forty-four teams. The middle school's To Be or Not To Be team placed nineteenth out of thirty-five teams. On May nineteenth, thirty members of the Sereval War Memorial High School Red Cross Club held a walkathon to raise money for the Central Jersey chapter of the American Red Cross. The group raised two thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars for this noteworthy community service project. The Sereval softball team piloted a fundraiser for the pancreatic research, pancreatic cancer research walk in Monmouth on May twentieth. The team made ribbons, posters, and collected donations during a softball game on May seventh. The team raised four hundred and eighty-five dollars for this extremely worthwhile cause. Special thanks to the International Society of the High School, the high school staff, and the Samson Upper Elementary staff for their generous donations. And finally, congratulations to the Sereval Bombers Varsity Baseball Team for their fantastic year. The Bomber Team ended their season with a record of twenty-five and three, which is a new school record for number of wins in a single season. They also received honors for being GMC Red Division Champions and the GMC Conference Coach of the Year is our own, Mr. Michael Novak. Congratulations, gentlemen, on a job well done.
Okay, now it's my report. Uh, first, Buildings and Grounds is the high school gymnasium for the girls' varsity softball, blue and gray baseball camp. Softball and baseball. Any questions with Section A? With none, moving to B. The first four, um, resolutions are our normal resolutions. Resolution number five is our, um, insurance carrier, Doyle Alliance Group, that is our broker. Uh, number six is the, uh, workers' compensation.